Evening, everyone. This is a Southfield City Council regular meeting being held on March the 8th, 2021 at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks. Brightwell.
Yeah.
Haskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
Morris.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Cruz.
Present.
Madam President, you do have a quorum and you do have a few department heads. The mayor is also and city administrator and deputy city administrator on the line.
Thank you. A pledge allegiance will be spoken tonight by Councilman Mandelbaum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Going down the agenda, we have no presentations. Next, we have appointments.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is Ken Cyber. I'm requesting that the council make two reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Board of Kathleen McNellis and Rosemary Allen.
Okay. Council.
I support those presentations.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell and supported by Councilman Cruz for the reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Boards of both Kathleen McNeils and Rosemary Allen. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Madam President, unless I didn't hear correctly, it sounded like the Councilman Brightwell said, "I support the presentation." I don't know if he actually made a, he moved to support that. Let me know if that stands correct.
For appointments. Should have been appointments.
Okay. All right, Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor? Taylor? Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Okay, the appointment is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a set of minutes, our regular meeting of February 22nd, 2021. Council.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Go ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to move that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2021.
I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz and supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for the acceptance of the regular minutes of February 22nd, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. The consent agenda is items A through D. Council.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I move that we accept consent agenda items A through D.
Is there support?
Support.
I'm taking support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for the acceptance of consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Haskins?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we are at our public hearing. Our first item is item A, Donor Partner LLC application for the tax abatement, Public Act 328 of 1998, a 400 Galleria.
Good evening, Councilwoman, Council President Taylor, Honorable Board, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed at February 22nd City Council meeting, the city has received a request from Donor Partner LLC for assistance with a personal property tax abatement. We had approved a tax abatement on March 30th, 2020, for 12 years at their current location. However, COVID-19 forced donor to reevaluate their office needs. Now they are looking for space that better suits their needs for the future, for the next 12 years, and they have found the space at the 400 Galleria. We have a short presentation from a representative from the company, Naveen Passi. After the presentation, we would ask that City Council open the public hearing to place this request in the existing district. That industrial development district for the Galleria was established on October 24th, 2016. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Naveen for a short presentation.
Thank you, Rochelle. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for your time. We'll go through this short presentation as Rochelle said. If you could flip to the next slide, please. So, and the next slide. Donor is an advertising agency based in, originally based in Detroit, Michigan, an 83-year-old company and have been headquartered in Southfield since the 70s. And we're in our current building up through the end of last year, since 1987. We have offices in other locations, including LA, in Connecticut, and in Pittsburgh. Next slide, please. So we've, you know, we make advertising and some of the most famous and iconic campaigns that are out there, including Mazda's Zoom Zoom campaign, the Dow Scrubbing Bubbles, Serta mattresses, and the sheep are just a portion of the iconic campaigns that we've created over the years. Next slide, please. And we have clients all over the country, including many in Detroit and in Michigan. But then also, throughout, we do work for Coca-Cola, for Johnson &amp; Johnson, for many hospital systems, for Fiat Chrysler and McDonald's here in Michigan, and many other clients as well. Next slide, please. And we have a large production facility that's based here in Southfield that we would look to migrate to the new space as well. And this facility brings in creative personnel, clients, and on occasion celebrities from all over the country to shoot content and then to ultimately produce content out of this facility. So it also brings people into the Southfield area to spend money beyond just our employees on an everyday basis. Next slide, please. And we are, you know, 300 strong in Southfield. And obviously, COVID has changed the world for everyone, including us, and we're all working remotely now, but are looking forward to getting back to our headquarters and our new headquarters that would be at the Galleria, as Rochelle mentioned. We are a business that, while it can survive and still perform quite well remotely, creative collaboration and the strategy and work that comes from what we do, we think is best served by having people connected together, obviously safely, and when the timing is right. But, you know, we are looking forward to getting back into the office in an evolved way, but still in a way that will allow us to do the best work for our clients. And obviously, bringing people back into Southfield. You know, we patronize a lot of local businesses when we're in the office and, you know, bringing 300 people in or a subset of that every day certainly helps with that. Next slide, please. And, you know, as we've looked at different opportunities for growth and expansion and/or relocation, you know, we've considered Detroit and other areas. Detroit, over the last several years, has pulled a lot of tech companies, a lot of creative agencies and other agencies downtown. And we have a large population that wants to be, you know, in Detroit. But I think as we've continued to look at what's best for our company overall, we do have a small office in Detroit that will continue to operate, but we felt like staying in Southfield was the right decision for our company as part of this kind of evolved approach to how we leverage the office. Next slide, please. And so that kind of brings us to where we are now. So we do have jobs planned to be rehired this year. We're looking to get into this new headquarters space sometime late summer, early fall, because it would have to be built out basically from scratch, from demolition, back through a full buildout. And with that, we would be investing in, you know, certainly the outfit of the office, new technology furniture and fixtures related to the buildout. And, you know, as I mentioned, you know, I think staying in Southfield is a benefit to the community. We would continue to have employees patronizing local businesses. The city would continue to collect real property taxes, certainly on the space. And, you know, our desire and goal would be to remain in Southfield.
Thank you very, for your presentation. I do just want to add that Donor has been very gracious and opened their doors to the Southfield Public Schools for many years, having students come in and explore career opportunities and showcase a wide range of skill sets that are needed to go into different technology jobs. And so they've been a great partner for the community.
Thank you.
So at this time, we would like to request City Council to open up public hearing for this item.
Okay, you were, yes, we'll do that. You were going in and out, and then it had a pause, so we're having a little technical difficulty there, so. But yes, thank you so far. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. If there's anyone on the lines that would like to speak to this matter, would you please raise your hand so the clerk can recognize you?
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? I don't have the ability to raise my hand, so I'm going to use my voice. Pamela Gerald Peal, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. I'm concerned about the fact, if I heard it stated correctly, that this is going to be a 12-year tax abatement. And if that's correct, I remembered when Sapphire Apartments came and was initially requesting a 12-year tax abatement. The city thought that that was too long of a time span to give a tax abatement. Now, considering the condition of Sapphire Apartments, with the residents not having heat, having air, having floods in the basement, water issues, I would think that that would constitute a 12-year abatement. The abatement was approved, not for 12 years, but for seven or five, and the applicant opted out because of, I guess, the money that they needed to invest. They didn't have it. So I'm concerned about the fact that we are, if I heard it correctly, giving a company a 12-year abatement when I thought that we had changed the rules. Second of all, I'm concerned about the fact that, I heard them mention a lot of things that they were doing, and they used all of the economic development, tax abatement words, buzzwords, to get the council shaking their head and saying yes. But what I didn't hear is, being a predominantly African-American community, what has been the contribution to the African-American community? Now, you mentioned also about having an office in Detroit, but you wanted to stay in Southfield, and I'm not really clear on that Southfield-Detroit connection. So if you could go back, Mr. Donor Incorporated or Donor Partner LLC, and expand on your comment, what you meant about you're in Detroit, but you want to stay in Southfield. Did you get and have you applied for a tax abatement in Detroit? I'm just looking at the fact that not only has COVID changed our entire globe, but COVID has also changed the lives of women, children, African-Americans, and everybody else. And everybody else is trying to do an even lesser amount with a smaller amount. And I think that companies have to be creative, just like people are having to be creative with the money that they have to do what they need to do. So can you just reconsider asking for this abatement if you don't need it? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this topic?
My comment is not about this topic, it's about another, so.
We can only speak to this topic during this public hearing.
Right.
Okay. We'll come back to you under communications, if that's when we listen to all comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else on the call that would like to speak to this topic?
Madam President, I don't think we have anyone else for the public hearing. Thank you.
Madam President, this is Rochelle Freeman.
Oh, yes, but before you say anything, can I close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like, since there's no one else that would like to make a comment, I'd like to declare the public hearing closed. Yes, now, Ms. Freeman, please.
Yes, I would just like to clarify Sapphire, the apartment complex, had requested a Public Act 210, which is a commercial rehabilitation tax abatement. They were seeking for the value of the property to be frozen for a certain number of years. That is a completely different economic incentive than the Public Act 328, which is a personal property abatement. We have, for many years, tied the term of the abatement to the term of the company's lease. Again, the city will continue to collect the real property that's associated with the, with the own, with the physical building. And the city is capped at a level based on how much personal property we can receive from the state. So there will be no negative effect to the city. So it's, we're purely benefiting the company by offering this incentive. And like Mr. Passy mentioned, they have offices around the country and around the world, they have clients. And so they are being pulled by many different locations to move their offices. And this incentive is another enticement to keep them in our community.
Okay, thank you. Now, at this time, I'd like to open the, open up to council for comments regarding this particular item. And I will start with you, Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you, Council President. I am in support of Donor staying in Southfield. We've had a wonderful working relationship with them and partnership through the years, but I am not in support of the 12 years. I thought that the council had decided a few years back that we were going to cap out our tax abatements for five years. So that's what I would be in support of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. I think all my questions were answered last week when we discussed this, and I am in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No comments.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No comments, I'm also in favor of it.
Thank you. Councilman Haskins?
Uh, no, no questions or comment for me, just, I'm just happy that Donor is continuing to stay in Southfield.
Thank you. And Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions, and I too, I'm glad that they're staying in Southfield and trying to work with this new normal.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on the line right now that would like to speak to this topic before we turn it back over to Rochelle? Okay, hearing done. Rochelle, would you like to?
Yes. Um, we are asking that you approve the adopt, adopt the attached resolution, which would approve the new personal property tax abatement for Donor Partners LLC for the 400 Galleria.
You froze again, I'm sorry.
Oh, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, great, that you approved the attached resolution for the new personal property exemption for Donor Partners LLC at the 400 Galleria for the 12 years commencing in 2021, and to direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary tax abatement agreement between the city and Donor Partners LLC, and have the mayor and city clerk sign all the documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Council? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I move that we accept the donor abatement as presented.
Is there support?
Support. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for us to approve the application for tax abatement, Public Act 328, with the above, I mean, with the approved, the attached revolution as, resolution as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morris?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is yours as well, Shelley?
Yes, it is, thank you. Again, as we discussed at the February 22nd City Council meeting, we have received an application from International Automotive Components Group North America for a personal property tax abatement, PA 328, for 2777 Franklin Road. We advanced this item a year too early in 2020, and it should have been moved forward in 2021. As you know, we're a redevelopment-ready community, and we had asked to jump on this project, and we did. And the state asked us to bring this item back in 2021, which is what we're doing right now. This company asked for a five-year tax abatement to be concurrent with their lease. When we did move this project forward, we did establish the Industrial Development District on October 13th, 2020. So that is one step that we do not have to do. At this time, we have a short presentation by a representative from IAC, Chris Baranek. I'm going to ask Chris to take over and go over the short presentation, and then after that, we will have a request to hold a public hearing for this item.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for inviting, invitation, and we, we appreciate your time. So a little bit about IAC. So IAC is a leading global tier-one auto supplier. We are innovative, and we create innovative, sustainable interior automotive parts for the world's automakers. Basically, our, next slide, please, sorry. So basically, basically, we are, um, we have, basically, we're Luxembourg-held global business. And when, as the slide says, it's a semi-location in 17 countries. We have about 18,000 employees. Our sales in 2019 were $3.7 million. Basically, we sell all the interiors of your car, except for the seats and, the seats. Basically, we sell to all the, pretty much all OEMs, you name it, we sell it. A little less than emphasis on the Korean automotive, but we, most of the big three in Detroit, we have major contracts with the United States and all throughout the globe. Next slide, please. So as the slide shows, we sell mostly, this is the types of products we sell, mostly IP door panels, overhead systems. We sell some exterior automotive components too, with the pumper trims and sun visors and grills. Next slide. So we came to you back in 2011 when we moved from Dearborn to where we are now, in 12 and Telegraph. And we asked for you guys to give us an abatement, which you guys were generous in doing so. So we basically are back to ask you again, like Shelley said, for a five-year abatement for our new site, since we're looking to relocate from 12 and Telegraph to American Center. So basically, when we, what's changed since then is we continue to be privately held by private equity firms. And basically, we were set up to be a global interior business, and we had soft trim and hard trim businesses. But we realized back, back in 2015, I was saying, that the synergies between those two businesses were as, as they should. So we basically, basically sold a chunk of the company, probably sending about 150-some people to basically Oria Solutions, which is also located in Southfield, Michigan. So we still own about 30% of that business, but we downsized with that. And basically, now, we're basically focused solely on the hard trim business, which is what I showed you, the doors, IP, and headliners. Next slide, please. So basically, as the slide says, we were, the management of the company decided to focus just on the hard trim, and we sold off the soft trim, as it says, to, we sold 27 facilities, five admin centers down to Oria Solutions. And then basically, basically, as I stated, we're focused on, basically, the hard trim business, which we manufacture about, I don't know, about 200, we have about 250 programs globally, and approximately 100 of them in North America and 150 globally. So we have operations in China, all throughout Europe, South Africa. We have, we've gotten out of Brazil, and we're in Mexico, Canada, and in North America. Or US, sorry. Next slide. So basically, as I said, we're currently at 2833 Telegraph Road. We, our lease is expiring at the end of April, and we're looking to move to 28275 Telegraph Road, which is an American center. Basically, as you can see, we're downsizing this footprint of the building. That's partially due to COVID, it's partially due to the sell-off of Oria. And basically, the company management's basically right-sized the business over the years. So we are looking for support from the, we're talking, speaking with Shelley and the city council, we're looking for support to stay in Southfield. We love the area, management's very happy with the location we're at, but we just, the building- but we just, the building's outgrown our size. Um, but we are looking to basically bring back about 165 people into the offices. Um, our business is, uh, our business is currently operating in the office. A majority of our people are in Southfield actively. Uh, my whole staff of 15 are in the office every day. There are quite a few people in the office. Um, we are considered essential manufacturing. So, we are operating, um, uh, in the office as, as required and a majority of the people have decided just to come into the office. So, um, we are frequently, uh, you know, frequently, uh, um, the businesses and, uh, around the areas, um, and we are, um, basically, also, being in North America headquarters, we also have most of our C-suite of our business in, uh, in Southfield. So, um, so, basically, a lot of the management, upper management, so we have, being that we're or our, our global business, a lot of our travel, a lot of people travel to Southfield for meetings and for trainings and different things like that, when we can, it's kind of diminished with COVID, right? The new norm. But we are planning on, uh, keeping that up and we bring clients into, uh, into Southfield, um, continuously to meet with us on business proposals, et cetera. So, um, basically, the current site at 2833 Telegraph Road is, is currently being actively marketed, um, and it, um, and, uh, basically, we are, um, loo- looking to move in the new site on, uh, on 2820 American Drive. I think we can get in the building on April 1st, so.
Next slide.
Really excited. Next slide.
There we go.
Sorry. So, basically, uh, 20, 2, the, the 277 Franklin Road, it basically, uh, we're on floors 20 and 21, as you see this word footage, and, uh, basically, we're basically moving, like I said, 165 people and we're spending about $2.1 million in revamping the space. And basically, I think the, the costs, uh, are basically a beta savings for us is about $231,000 over for five years of our lease. Next slide, please? And that's just a little picture of our, our, uh, our location. And I think the next, I think that's it. Next slide? All right, yeah, so, basically, like I said, we're, we're, I, I, I can speak from upper management, basically, that IAC is very excited on staying in Southfield and remain, and it'll remain our North American headquarters for the future. We, uh, we have a five-year lease and, uh, with an option for another five years and we're, we're hopeful, hopeful, we're hopeful that we stay in the community for, up to the next 10 years. And, uh, we appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, for that presentation. Council President.
Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I will now declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone on the lines that would care to speak to this topic, please let the clerk know now.
This is Pamela Gerald and I'm prepared to speak to this topic.
Okay, thank you.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. I want to thank the guy, Chris, for giving his, uh, presentation regarding yet another tax abatement in the city of Southfield. And I'm paying attention and making some notes as you're giving your presentation and your numbers are impressive. You said that you are in 60 unique locations, 17 countries, 18,000 employees. And I think that's terrific. In those 60 countries, in those 60 unique locations, 17 countries, are you getting any tax subsidies or corporate welfare? Now, I'm sure that Shelley will advise you not to answer me, but I don't want to push this on you, but I want to drop it in your lap so you'll think about it tonight. So, are you getting any other corporate welfare in these 60 unique locations in these 17 countries with your 18,000 employees? Now, the city is doing a favor by allowing you, and they're gonna rubber stamp it, to get this PA 328 personal property tax. But what are you doing for your employees since this is COVID? What are you doing for your employees? I'm getting a little sick and tired of companies moving from a location that they spend millions of dollars to build and I was there when you came and got that Telegraph location? I'm assuming that you own the building. Why would you be leaving a state-of-the-art, beautiful building on Telegraph to go lease a place for five years in another location? In all that you've presented, I have not heard you say, because of COVID, this is what we're going to do for our employees. Due to the pandemic, this is what we're going to allow our employees to do. Now, I want to remind the council about a company from 20 years ago, long before all of your tenure. We had a country called, uh, a co- a company called Aerosmith that came to the city of Southfield and got a huge tax abatement. Under the offices of Economic Development, they were gonna hire all these Southfield people. It never happened. The company chose to file bankruptcy, so they did not fulfill their tax abatement obligation. And due to our former city attorney, may he rest in peace, the city chose not to go after this company. Now, what is the community benefit for this tax abatement? How are the residents benefiting from you leaving Telegraph to go to this new leased location for five years?
Thank you, Ms. Gerald, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gerald. Would you please, thank you?
My time is not up, I have four seconds and the buzzer. Four seconds. Now, I'm also timing too.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, Ari, thank you for the timing, uh, and, and letting us know when it was up. And, um, is there anyone else on the call that would like to speak to this topic? Okay, hearing none. I will declare the public hearing closed. Shelley, for your closing comments, please?
Yes, I would just like to state that IAC was a tenant at the two spaces on Telegraph Road and they originally consolidated their operations into the, the high-rise and as they needed, they expanded into the smaller showcase space. And as Chris mentioned, um, with new leadership, they, um, modified the way that their business operates and had the engineers going back out in the field. And again, they sold off a portion of their, um, company, which did relocate into the city, stayed in the city of Southfield. So, y- you know, uh, the businesses morphed to, uh, adjust to their needs and we are extremely pleased that they decided to keep their operations in our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open it up to counsel. I'll start with you, Councilman Ma'am.
Um, no, I, I have no questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions, thank you.
Hmm, Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Uh, no questions either.
Thank you. And Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, would you like to make a motion?
So, Bright, Brightwell, I make a.
I move.
Uh, yeah, I move that we accept the, uh, the abatement request of International Automotive Corporation as presented.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for us to accept the application for Tax Abatement Public Act 328 of International Automotive Components Group North America. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Shelley, uh, does anybody else have any comments or anything they'd like to?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, we have no site plans. Next, we have communications. And again, um, we're, we'll open the, the lineup for anyone that wanted to give us any comments to the council and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Uh, Madam President, we did have a couple of people in line, so I'm starting with the first person that was, um, in line.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Jennifer Bright, my address is 24430 Green Valley Street. Um, I would first like to say that I, I thank Councilwoman Banks, uh, for taking a stand during last week's meeting, uh, by not only voting no to allow the city's attorney to negotiate with the school district, um, following the closed session regarding the Green Valley access road, uh, but also explaining why she voted no and advocating for the residents, um, who do not have a voice in this decision. Um, I just remember a previous meeting where we were told we would have blood on our hands when we opposed having access to our street. Um, there was only an apology issued when the councilman was cau- called out about those comments. Um, and since that day, no one has reached out to any of the residents to, uh, be a bridge between the residents and the school district. Um, we have only heard a lot of bias and not much care has been given to the fact that the school district did not make any attempt to even explore alternative routes. Uh, I have a few questions and comments that I hope someone can answer and, and address during the subsequent, um, communications portions of this meeting. Uh, I want to know why the residents were not made aware that the school district, um, had a purchase offer on the table. Until, we did not find out about it until after the required acceptance date had pa- had passed. Um, and I want to know why we were not allowed to purchase the parcel, uh, not given that option. Uh, at this point, since council's approved, the city attorney to move forward with the purchase negotiations with the school district, it does not seem the residents of Green Valley Street, um, have much recourse. So, I, I want to know who will be responsible for enforcing the rules to keep us safe. I recently saw a school bus come down our street for no reason at all and I do not trust anything about this whole situation. I do not trust that this will only be used, this access road will only be used for emergencies and I do not trust that we will be kept safe, the residents here. Um, since there are no other access roads in the city of Southfield that run through a residential street such as Green Valley, there's no blueprint or protocol for the operation of this access road. Um, therefore, who will determine what constitutes an emergency and how will the resident of the street be made aware that there is an emergency? I, I just want to know what, you know, I, I, I don't even know why there was a closed session, um, to talk about this. I, I've been attending the city council meetings, um, regularly and have not seen it on any agenda and it just seems, you know, from beginning to now, it has been a covert operation, um, by the city coun- by, by school, the school district and some members of the city council. I just don't know why the residents, uh, are not informed of anything.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Um, Attorney, would you like to speak to this matter at this time? I know usually when there's, uh, ongoing litigation that we normally don't ask you to speak publicly, but since we have residents on the line and this is of concern, uh, would you mind stating what you can?
Well, um, good evening, um, everyone. And yes, Madam President, I didn't want to wait to see if there's any other callers. Um, I will state, uh, number one, the reason why we were in closed session is pursuant to the Open Meetings Act that allows the council to talk about, uh, uh, an attorney's legal opinion, written opinion, that is subject to attorney-client privilege, which is not, um, something that is disclosed under the Freedom of Information Act and therefore it is not disclosed in public, uh, when we discuss the written opinion. And when we came out of closed session, council, um, did make a decision to go forward with, uh, in the easement. And as the caller stated, it was not, um, a purchase office offer. There is more to what they presented. I believe, uh, the residents may have gotten a copy of it and that was a legal document that was drafted pursuant to, um, what they call the Imminent Domain and Condemnation Act. And at this point, I cannot give them legal advice, but it was not that they, you know, said, here's a price, um, do you want to do this? There's much too, um, and I'm trying not to discuss my legal opinion, but I can tell the caller that this was not, uh, something that, you know, there was an offer on the table and it was willing and dealing of that nature. It was all done pursuant to Michigan law. And even at this point, still discussions and, um, any opinion that I've written, I cannot discuss in open. The only thing that I could tell the caller is to contact the school, uh, board if they want to discuss, um, their attorney's opinion. And at this point, really, all I can tell the caller, they can consult with an attorney to understand the law as it was in that letter. I think the way the letter was presented to the residents was like, hey, we're just gonna make something. And that was not the case. This was, um, a very strict procedure that the city was presented with and decisions have to be made or there are other options that can be taken pursuant to the law. And, um, at this point, I don't want to comment any further except to tell the resident that it was not that plain in black and white that there was just money thrown on the table and that was done. And because there are potential discussions still going on, I don't want to comment any further. Um, and I guess I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Um, our next caller, please?
I've already comment, commented.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody, this is Rosemary Allen. Uh, hi, it's Rosemary Allen. And I just wanted to, uh, chime in and say thank you to Mayor Seifer and to this honorable body for the reappointment to the Parks and Rec Board. This year marks my 19th year on this board and I am still excited about the opportunities that await, um, for serving on the Parks and Rec Board because there are so many wonderful things that we do in Parks and Rec that really bring the community, uh, together. So, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to continue serving and you all stay safe and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. And congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. Do we have another caller?
Well, all of the lines are open, uh, if anybody want, wants to speak currently.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the line?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Muller. Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Madam President, I wish tonight to talk about Section 11.18. I wish tonight to talk about Section eleven point eighteen. Eleven point eighteen in the Southfield City Charter. Section eleven point eighteen is entitled Amendments, which describes how this city council may, if it wishes, amend all by itself the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step Michigan state law, known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of nineteen oh nine, thus making Section eleven point eighteen null and void. Eleven point eighteen became null and void way back in nineteen fifty-eight, when the Southfield founding fathers attempted to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the original Southfield City Charter. That's when the nine-member Southfield City Charter Commission accidentally deleted the second step in a two-step process. Michigan state law mandates yesterday and today that it takes two, two mandatory steps to amend the Southfield City Charter. Sadly, eleven point eighteen categorically deletes State Mandatory Step Number Two. In a word, it is about time that you folks here on this city council fix Section eleven point eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
I've given my name, uh, several times already throughout the night, and residents know my voice, Pamela Gerald. I've got a couple of concerns. Number one, we've been doing these virtual meetings or webinar meetings for over a year, and to have this much technical difficulty when you're conducting business and voting on something that comes before the body, I think is an absolute sin before God. If need be, maybe you should do a mock rehearsal of the meeting to test the equipment. That's number one. Number two, we have council committees, and I don't think that they're being properly advertised on the city's website. You had legal notices hanging in the lobby. Well, with the city being closed, we don't see the legal notices. I'm not seeing a whole lot of it on the city's website. So, in my opinion, you are suppressing the residents' ability to participate in these council committee meetings. Number two, zoning, planning, and some of the other city committees, it is the same thing. I'm not able to navigate on the city's website to find these notices. So what, you have them hanging in the building, on the legal notice board where they belong? But if City Hall is closed and no one can see those notices, you are again suppressing the residents from participating in these meetings. My next point that I wanted to make. I'm going to go on a radio tour, and I'm going to do some free advertising for the city of Southfield on my own accord, not as an official person, but just as a taxpayer in the city of Southfield. And I'm going to let the entire state of Michigan know that the city of Southfield is open for business, and all you have to do is come before city council with your P A three twenty-eight. You can get it five years, seven years, eight years, nine years, ten years, eleven years, all the way up to a bargain basement time limit of twelve years. What if we decided not to do tax abatement anymore in the city of Southfield? We wouldn't even need an economic development division within the city. It could just simply fall right under planning. It's time for a change.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else?
Madam President, I think that concludes all individuals that were participating in communications this evening.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who had comments this evening. Um, now is the council portion, and I will start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh, thank you. Uh, at first, I just want to, I know we, I kind of did it last week, but I just want to, uh, acknowledge that today is International Women's Day. Uh, I want to, of course, acknowledge all the strong women in my life and the strong women on this council and, uh, in the city of Southfield and the people who, the women who represent us. Um, I also want to make sure that everyone is, uh, staying safe, uh, making sure they are wearing their masks. If you can, sign up, uh, through either Oakland County, um, or through, uh, your, your hospital, um, or if you're able to, if you have a, uh, your farm, your local pharmacy, um, we are at, we are getting close, uh, to the end of this. Per our, our president, President Biden, uh, we might have, uh, enough supply of vaccine by the end of May, uh, which is really exciting, uh, is getting us closer to normal. Uh, one last thing, uh, of course, this, uh, situation with the, with the school, um, or with the school district, um, obviously, just like our, our city attorney said, there's not a lot that we can talk about because it's still an, an ongoing legal process, but, uh, I just want to say that it's, your, your, your concerns are not falling on deaf ears. Um, this is not over. Um, and I know as soon as I can, I will be happy to answer all your questions. But I just, just, I want everyone to know that we hear you on the council and we, we definitely hear your concerns, and as soon as we are able to, we will be happy to talk to you all about it. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, you know, I echo the sentiments of Councilman Hoskins regarding the, uh, the, the easement issue with the, uh, school board. Um, I also want to remind everyone that the city of Southfield is currently working on our updating, uh, our updated comprehensive master plan. Um, every week, there's different categories, and if you go to the, uh, city's website and either search for twenty twenty-six master plan, go under the Planning Department or even under the News section of the city's website, um, you can, um, look at what's going on, sign up for alerts when categories change. We would love to make sure that we get everyone's input, uh, for that master plan, uh, to see how we should, uh, what we should do within Southfield in the next, uh, five years and, and going forward. Um, other than that, you know, continue to, to stay safe. There is, uh, hopefully an end in sight, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No comments for me this evening. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to, um, uh, my colleagues for recognizing, um, you know, International Women's Day. Um, I'd also like to say to all the brave, capable, strong, and resilient women out there, um, may we know them, may we be one of them, and may we raise them. Um, Happy Woman, what, excuse me, Happy Woman's International Day. This past Saturday, our police department held, held a gun lock campaign. Love it, uh, excuse me, lock it for love. Love our children, lock your guns. Hundreds of gun locks were distributed to members of the community. Um, if you happen to miss this event, gun locks are available at the police department. There is no cost, um, to obtain a gun lock. Also, I'd like to remind everyone that this coming Saturday evening at midnight, we go into daylight savings time. Please remember to turn your clocks forward one hour. And last but not least, please continue to wear your masks. The weather is breaking, um, and we still have to be very careful in Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bright, well?
I, yes, I would echo my, uh, colleagues with respect to, uh, the comments about Women's History Month, and obviously, uh, I've had some, you know, very strong and significant women in my life, and I definitely appreciate that, and I'm thankful for it. Uh, but to move it on with my, uh, I have some additional things for veterans, and as I've always said, that you may not know, you may not be a veteran, but you perhaps know a veteran, so you can pass this on. But the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency, they are offering food to all veterans who have food insecurity due to COVID, the loss of a job, or, or any other circumstances. This is for all the individuals in Wayne, Oakland, and McComb County. And I have a number here. I'm going to give you this number, but it's one eight hundred six four two four eight three eight. That is the acronym for Michigan Vet, one eight hundred Michigan, Mich Vet, one eight hundred six four two four eight three eight. And just mention to them that you have food insecurity and that you're a veteran, and they will, uh, assist you in getting a hundred, one hundred dollar, um, food card and also a certificate, uh, from a local, uh, grocer. And if, uh, if you have additional questions about veteran offerings in Oakland County, which I've given out over the, over the months, you can reach me here at City Hall, two four eight seven nine six five one five zero, and I will get back to you and, uh, share with you all the info relative to, uh, to veterans and, and what is being offered for veterans. So, uh, with that, please pass this on to veterans. We, we, we have a lot of veterans in Metro, um, Detroit, and some of them are definitely in need, and there's a lot of resources out there. This is being funded by the Michigan Veterans Trust Fund. When I was chair of the Veterans Commission, the Michigan Veteran Trust, Trust Fund, uh, is a very endowed money, money, materially endowed, uh, organization. So they have a lot of money to share on veterans, so feel free to, and I encourage you to dial one eight hundred six four two four eight three eight to tap into some of these funds that are in, in the, um, Michigan Veterans Trust Fund. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Cruz?
Madam President, I have no comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I just want to concur everything that has already been said, and, uh, I just wanted to add that a couple of weeks ago, we had a resident that asked the question about, uh, sensitivity training of our officers and first responders. So I reached out to our police chief and the directors and our, um, administration, and the response that, uh, I received back, I'd like to read, because we like to close the loop, uh, like I said to the residents all the time, that we listen to your concerns and your questions, and we do the research, but, uh, we, we also now want to also let you know what it is that we've found. The, uh, police chief said that the Southfield Police Department held mandatory sensitivity training from January fourth through the eleventh of this year, twenty twenty-one, and the instructor was Mr. James Friedman of Friedman Training and Consulting LLC, conducted the training sessions. The areas of concentration included, but were not limited to, race and law enforcement in urban environment, understanding cultural awareness in law enforcement, attribution, uh, bias, autism awareness, understanding the mental and special needs community, unconscious bias, both implicit and explicit, officer wellness, national unrest, risk management, empathy and individualism, culture of the community, and racial biases. Uh, the other comments were that the instructor was very powerful and informative, and he was also engaging in his training. So I just wanted to let the residents know that we are, or did have our, uh, sensitivity training for our, our officers and our first responders, and thank you for your questions. And that's all I have for tonight. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening once again. Uh, Ms. Banks stole a lot of my thunder. Um, I did attend the, uh, Love Your Kids, Lock Your Guns event, um, on Saturday, and, uh, I salute our, our police department for their proactive, um, many of the proactive things they do. This is really, uh, about, um, keeping kids safe, but, um, the statistics of the number of children that, um, are, uh, killed each week, uh, one or two children, um, self-inflicted gunshot wounds playing with a gun. And then the number is much higher, um, uh, for, uh, uh, young people age eleven to fourteen, uh, where, um, I think, uh, the police chief said, uh, twenty-seven hundred, uh, um, boys and girls are killed each year, um, through, um, uh, gunplay, and how important it is to, uh, lock, uh, your guns, keep them away, and not to think that, oh, my kids would never do this. Um, children are naturally curious, um, and if they're told not to, many times they will. And so this, um, uh, as Ms. Banks said, the, uh, there's the free gun lock giveaway continuing, um, at the Southfield Police Department. No questions asked. You can just come in and get one for free. But also, a sponsor of this event was Four One One Therapy, um, Hassan Fayed. Uh, Four One One Therapy is on Northwestern Highway, just north of Nine Mile Road on the southbound lanes, and you can go to Four One One Therapy, uh, for the rest of the month. They will be giving out, uh, gun locks as well. Uh, on a second matter, uh, we have had, um, in the mayor's office, quite a few, uh, calls complaining about litter. Um, the snow has melted, and, um, li- litter that was covered, uh, with snow is now very visible. Uh, our crews have been out, um, especially since we've had a whole series now of dry, uh, days, and the crews have been making the rounds, um, a tremendous amount of trash has been picked up. And I want to thank the, um, Southfield Parks and Garden Club. On Saturday, uh, afternoon, uh, eight members of the club came out, um, and cleaned up the, uh, area of Eleven Mile and Lasher, which was, uh, heavily, uh, littered. Uh, we appreciate the, the citizen volunteers, and of course, um, the city continues, uh, on this never-ending fight to keep our city attractive and clean, and it's really been, uh, kind of overwhelming, uh, the last two weeks now that the snow is gone, or most of it's gone, and, um, we, uh, have seen a tremendous amount of litter, so, uh, we're on it, um, and we're always looking for volunteers to, uh, go out and do litter pickups, And we're always looking for volunteers to go out and do litter pickups. And if you're out walking, we suggest you take a bag with you. And certainly, we can distribute gloves if you need them and bags if you're, would like to join our, our efforts to keep Southfield beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our administration portion.
Thank you, Madam President. On this evening's agenda, an item was placed to, requesting city council to act on the Second Amendment to the purchase agreement with Contour Acquisitions LLC. As I indicated in an email earlier to council, we are still in negotiations on that item. I want to let council know that an extensive amount of time last week and a summit on Friday, multiple revisions over, over the weekend. We thought we had it this morning, and I, I, I believe we just have a few more things to work out. So I wanted to provide council with that update. The original purchase agreement does expire on March 12th of 2021. Madam President, as we discussed with the Northland Steering Committee, we would like council to consider a special meeting for this Thursday evening as we continue to work our way through this agreement. Negotiations were happening again this afternoon, and we will be back on it tomorrow. And I think early tomorrow afternoon, we're scheduled to have another revision. So at this time, I am asking council to consider having a special council meeting for Thursday, March 11th. So I'm formally making that request.
Yes, and I'll address it under the schedule section.
All right, thank you. Then I'll move my comments just to COVID update. As, as has been mentioned by a number of elected officials, we're encouraging people to continue with the safety protocols, masking up, social distancing, six feet, work from home. We continue to run advertisements in the Southfield Sun. That advertisement encourages people to go to the Oakland County website, as well as list multiple other vendors, you know, from Myers to CVS to Walgreens, to Rite Aid, to our local healthcare providers, Henry Ford Healthcare Systems, Beaumont Healthcare, Essentia, St. Joe's, McLaren. We're trying to get people into multiple networks. And additionally, the administration has asked Cable 15 to run a video that was produced by the Kaiser Family Foundation. This is about a five-minute video. It is targeted at the African-American community and strongly encouraging people of the African-American community to get vaccinated. We continue to have our COVID calls on Mondays and Thursday. Council President joins us when her schedule permits. The mayor is usually on the calls with us. We are averaging on any day, four to six employees who are out either in quarantine or have outright been, outright have tested positive. So we, you know, continue to monitor that situation. We're very concerned about these new variants. The numbers for the last two days were over 1,000 for each day. However, it appears our ability to respond to COVID has improved as the number of deaths appear to be on the decline. I thought something very disturbing today's numbers, though, regarding the number of school-aged children affected, and that number was 47, and the tri-county area was some of the hardest hit. And I think we're going to see greater challenges as our children return to school. So we continue to deal with COVID, encourage people to get vaccinated. Hopefully, the group slots will open up. We are working at getting more of our employees here vaccinated. And in the next few days, the administration will make the decision whether or not we open City Hall for regular business. Again, we are open virtually and by appointment. And, you know, the majority of business items can be conducted. The administration will have a dialogue with the city clerk regarding what we could do to improve postings of various public meetings. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for the update on COVID. Madam Attorney?
Yes, Madam President, good evening. Thank you. The only thing I wanted to address is the comment by Mr. Mullins. I think he and I are saying the same thing, we're just so close. And yet, I thought I better go over it again, because he continues to read 11.18 that talks about the amendment. And he talks about the Home Rule City Act, and he talks about two simple steps. The two simple steps in the ordinance says a three-fifths vote of the members-elect, which is city council, and the other way is an initiative petition. And the three-fifths vote of the members-elect is that a resolution is presented that says we're going to amend the charter, such as we did this past year, for bringing back the primary. Once that resolution was presented, there had to be a three-fifths vote. Now, in another year, you may get a petition. And then that is also, as Mr. Mullins continually mentions, that is governed by the Home Rule City Act. So there are his two easy steps, and I just think we're saying the same, we're saying the same thing, but in a different dialect. And then because our ordinance, sorry, our charter section specifically says, as provided in Act 279, which is the Home Rule City Act. And the Home Rule City Act pretty much says the same thing, that you can propose an amendment by the legislative body of the city on a three-fifths vote, or by the petition. And then that second step that he mentions, yes, it has to go to the electors of the city at the next regular municipal or general election. So I just want to continue to hopefully communicate with Mr. Mullins in the way we're doing right now, and that at some point, we'll say the same exact thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to note that the clerk's office has been posting the notices that were discussed earlier. What we can look at as a better avenue for our website is to make it more user-friendly and efficient for individuals that may be looking and searching our website, because sometimes that can be a little cumbersome. But we have been posting all of the, the meetings that were previously addressed. But we will welcome the opportunity to make sure that they are in a spot where everyone can find them in an easy and accessible way. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer?
Good evening. Just wanted to let everyone know that the deadline for paying their local property taxes has now passed. We closed our books on March 2nd, and any delinquent taxes that are outstanding can be paid directly to the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. Their offices are closed to the public currently, but they have a Dropbox, and they also have online access to make a payment, as well as also putting payments in the mail. The website to pay the local tax, to pay the local taxes to the county would be paylocaltaxes.com. Paylocaltaxes.com for any delinquent balances. And also, I wanted to bring to the audience's attention for water bill payments, that payments can be made online. There is no convenience fee, there's no service fee at all, that you can use a credit card or debit card or e-check, whatever they prefer. And those payments, there is a link for it on the bottom of the front page of the website. It's make a payment over there, it says. Or the other shortcut would be CES.CityofSouthfield.com. And I also encourage people to sign up for the automatic bill payment that's available for their water bills, which allows them to have the payment directly debited from their checking account, from their banking account, on the due date. And so this way, they don't have to worry about making the payment on time, there won't be any late fees. And it makes it a quick and easy process. So any questions, the water department is available to answer. Area code 248-796-4850, 248-796-4850. And their hours are from 7:30 to 4:30 over there. That is all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Planner?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to thank Councilman Mandelbaum for mentioning the master plan update. This week is dealing with healthy living, climate change, parks and recreation. And there's a special set of questions specifically on Beachwoods. So again, I want to encourage all the residents and others who either work or live in, in Southfield to get on the website and, and give us your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Assessor? And our engineer? Okay, hearing no, nothing. Next, under scheduling, as you heard, the city administrator, he would like for us to have a special meeting on Thursday, March 11th at 6:00 PM to solely discuss the purchase agreement for Northland with, regarding Contour Acquisitions. Council, I need to first have someone make a motion, and then we can vote on this.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to move that we have a city council meeting on Thursday, March 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM to discuss the Second Amendment agreement to purchase real estate with, for Contour Acquisitions LLC. Report.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for us to have a special meeting on Thursday, March 11th at 6:00 PM to discuss the Second Amendment agreement to purchase the real estate of Contour Acquisitions LLC. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes, but however, I will not be in attendance. I am going to be out of town.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Meeting will be scheduled for Thursday, March 11th at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance. We have one ordinance to enact, ordinance number 1733 for PZR 20-0007.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I move that we enact ordinance number 1733, which is PZR 20-0007.
Is there support? I'm sorry, who was that?
That was Mandelbaum.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to enact ordinance number 1733, PZR 20-0007, rezoning request, rezoning request. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments, questions, concerns from anyone? All right, well, hearing none, we will now declare this meeting closed. Everyone have a good evening.